Next slide, please. So here's what it looks like. Our sources never cross over to the users. We always are in the shortfall as it stands right now. So what are we going to do? Next slide, please. Well, actually, before we go there, what I did here for you is let's compare it to forecast. The blue line, the blue bars, was the forecast we looked at last fiscal year. I said, May January 28th. And the orange line is what we're looking at right now. Make a click my mic, please. Click through it. So what you see here is it's a $5 million shortfall. I added the 1922 column. This is the current year. And for this current year, we look at $5 million. Sure, we'll be treating which we have to resolve. Next slide. So $5 million this year, $10.6 million next year. This year, what we're going to do is we are going to take advantage of the surplus. So if you look at the blue bar right now, 18, 19, the first bar, 1920 fiscal year, we projected in mid-year, this was just about six weeks ago, a surplus of $2.5 million. And with a new shortfall, we need to resolve that $2.5 million, which is the orange bar below. What we're going to do is on May 5th, we'll come to you with the third quarter financial status report. And we'll have to rebalance the current year budget, even what we're seeing today. Next slide, please. In order to save money, we are instituted, the city manager instituted a temporary hiring expenditure freeze for non-essential activities. We have a review process for high-propositions, which are requested to be filled, as well as for non-expenditures. The good thing is that as you're projecting right now, that we'll expect to have savings by the fiscal year end, around $5 to $10 million. It's not clear yet how much it is. The department is also trying to still support essential activities. But we definitely can fix this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, we're looking at the shortfall of $10.6 million. What we have done is we are scrubbing the budget. We're looking at ongoing expenditure savings without reducing off-line service levels. What this means is we're not, we don't, we do not want to at this time reduce services to our community and reduce positions. And the reason for that is because we have too little economic data available to us to understand how deep this recession really is. If we want to be judicious in balancing the needs to balance our budget, but also not reducing service levels to our community. So therefore, what we plan to do will bring forward to you with our proposed budget. City manager's proposed budget is use of the budget civilization reserve and unassigned general fund reserve. The BSR or budget civilization reserve is actually built, as the council adopted or established this reserve exactly for this reason, for sudden change in the economy, unforeseen expenditures, or unforeseen revenue reductions. Next slide, please. So here's a quick slide of the reserves. So to refresh that public know and do know where we are. If you look at total assigned, the committed reserves, it's the bottom part of our general total general fund reserves. Funds available to you is $83 million. The council has made very wise decisions in the last three to four years and established very large reserve balances, about 60% and more of the operating budget. This will help us to get through these recessionary times, and especially for next, this year, next year. Next slide, please. So one of the next steps, while we are previously working on preparing to propose budgets for you, which is what the city manager released on May 4th. It will include a strategy on how to balance not just next year's budget shortfall, but for the next two to three years, as it stands today, as what we know today, and what given the economic data we have today. Then on May 5th, we'll come to you to rebalance the 2019, 20 budget, that's the current budget we are living in. As I mentioned, we're going to use some reserves and we're going to decrease revenues as we're projecting them to be for the end of the fiscal year. May 15th, that's the study session for the proposed operating budget. And then we plan to have the public hearing and budget adoption on June 2nd of this year. And could I add a next slide, please? I believe that concludes our presentation and open for questions.
Thank you very much, Walter. Clearly, this is an item that is a great concern, second to the public health of our community. And we, I believe, understand that your presentation is the most current economic update, fiscal update, that we can have, so I appreciate that. And I want to let you know that I appreciate your work as the pandemic continues to unfold and you continue to update us day by day with our fiscal health. I'll go to the council if there's any hands raised or just if you've heard any requests here. Comments? Okay, let's see here. I see a couple of digital hands. We'll start with Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you so much for that presentation. I really appreciate all of the work that you're doing and your leadership in the days to come and hopefully years to come. I know we're going to experience some challenges. I have a question. I know it may be too soon to, to keep, because the information is changing so much. I think one of the things that would help me as we're getting these budget updates is if we're able to also maybe just captivate. It doesn't look like this is projecting any of the federal funding that may be available to help with the forecast. And so I don't know, I know those are definitely along in the recovery state, but as they start coming, if maybe we could somehow track it, just so we could be aware of what those look like. You know, and this includes FEMA or any other, or any other funding stream that may be able to be coming into the city of Milpitas.
Sure, Councilmember Dominguez. We are establishing, we have established a tracking system already. Like a contract is literally your approved accepted report, just the item before that. We obviously will seek FEMA reimbursement. It will take time to figure out, figure out the process with FEMA. We're getting now information from federal agencies and how to apply for grants. You received the information memo yesterday from us, which outlined potential grant opportunities the city may have. We have staff obviously monitoring this and as we know more, if we know how to apply for them, we definitely come back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dominguez. And next up, we have Vice Mayor Nunez. You're on mute, sir. Kind gentleman, you're on mute and there we go.
Thank you. Walter, if you could please put up the chart of the timeline that you had for when you were going to bring things to us, the adoption of the budget, things of that sort.
Sure. Well, Mike, do us the. So the next step is May 4th, we'll release the proposed budget. Then May 14th, we actually have the budget study session with you. So that's the first two items, where you're going to see what we're changing in the budget, which is, by the way, quite minimal. The only changes we're looking at right now is what's legally required, saves money, and items like that.
So a few questions here. First, I thought it was an exceptional presentation. One, you're sitting at home trying to pull this all together, not in your office. Yeah. Two, trying to predict, you know, what's going to be happening to this city and this county. I just thought it was remote.
Vice Mayor, I'm not sure if it's just me, but I'm losing your audio here. I don't know.
Hours.
There you go. Back on here.
Okay. What I would like to ask is, when, first, when is the May revise come out? Because I was reading the governor saying that he's going to be, it's going to look much different than what he first thought. So do you know the date of that? Traditionally, when it comes out?
Yeah, it's usually late May, when he issues his May or June revise for this proposed budget. I'm sure it's going to look very different at the state level, too.
Okay. So, and really, it's only about, is it about a little over a month from now then, before we get started into this budget process? Help me understand. Even now, we are looking at changing some of the things within our budget as needs arise, and I get that. Tell me what you're going to be looking at as we make, recommend those changes? Because needs come up now that weren't there, you know, four, five, six months ago. What are you going to be gauging the requests? You know, two months, a month ago, at the Housing Subcommittee, we asked for, I think, an additional $100,000. If we had made that request today, just, you know, what would you have looked at before recommending to council? Yes, that we have the money to do that. Yes, that seems to fit within the pattern of direction the council is bringing, the things of that sort. That's all I'm sort of looking for right, right now.
Sure. So the first thing is, how can we preserve the shortfall? Or how can we diminish the shortfall in the general fund? So part of the strategy, what we do is we look at other funds and shift expenditures as allowable by law, or how the council set the prerogatives for expenditure for this fund. Coming back to the housing example, which you had is, that actually comes directly out of the Affordable Housing Fund. So that fund has a good fund balance at this time. So that's what the council decides to allocate the funding that's obviously, does not affect the general fund. If something affects the general fund, then obviously that's, again, council policy decision, how you would like to spend funds.
Okay. Is, so are we going to stick mostly to the general fund as opposed to the capital outweigh?
We are looking, you will see a budget study session for the capital budget on April 14th. It's next week.
Okay.
And what we are, what we are looking at this capital budget is, can we defer expenditures if reasonable? We're focusing on health and safety and counter priorities.
And then just my last question. There's a number of agencies, well, my last question for now. I saw a smile on the city manager's face, thinking that I really wasn't going to ask anyone.
He's always smiling.
That's probably right. Are we paying attention to other agencies as they're developing their budgets that will impact us? I.e. the Water District and some of those others that may be looking how they're going to recoup that if they raise their rates higher than they first thought, will have a direct impact on us?
Yes, the respective staff is in communication with other agencies who have a budgetary impact for us. And obviously, we would have to adjust accordingly. The other thing what we're doing is we are among finance managers, city managers. We are comparing notes, what everybody else is doing in the valley regarding to economic impact. And what is, although independently, if done this, we're pretty well aligned. That we all seeing about a 10% revenue reduction across the board.
Okay. Thank you very much. And once again, that was an exceptional report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Did I lower my hand?
You did, absolutely. You're always current with the functions of technology. Appreciate that very much. Okay, I'll look to the rest of our panelists here. City Council, if there's any virtual raised hands, I will call upon you. I am looking now at the panelist column. I don't see a raised hand. Therefore, I will look to the council for a motion to receive and accept the report.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez. We have a second by Councilmember Dominguez. All in favor? I believe we, do we need to do a roll call, Chris, on this one?
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you.
Got to do a roll call here, so we'll start with Councilmember Fan. Hello.
Hey, hi.
Great background.
Oh, thank you.
Now, we're going with the roll call vote here, if you may, to accept and receive and accept the report for gen item two here.
Is this me?
Oh, we're doing the roll call, so we're starting with you.
Oh, okay, I.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Montana, I believe, is logging in soon, but we'll proceed to Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Nunez.
Yeah, aye.
And aye for myself, and the motion is carried. Thank you very much, Walter. And we will be looking to you continually for information, reports, guidance, and everything, all of the above. Thank you very much, Walter. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Walter. I know you're on mute, but I know you hear me. So I'll move on here, too. I see the thumb very well. We'll move on, item number three. Let's approve, pardon me, item number three, approval of temporary emergency pay extension for full-time and part-time employees through April 11th, 2020, and approval of recommended staffing plan from April 12th and related benefits through the end of shelter-in-place order, or until the city ends its declared emergency and resumes regular operations. And we'll go to our Assistant City Manager, Ash Winy Konton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll get started with the presentation. So, next slide, Mike. So as we all are very well aware, the shelter-in-place from the County of Santa Clara, the order became effective on March 17th. It was initially supposed to go through April 7th and now has been extended through May 3rd. And on March 17th, the city council also ratified a proclamation of emergency, which was initially declared by the interim city manager on March 12th. Given the nature of the emergency, we continue our full activation of our Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, and we're at stage five of our pandemic management plan. Next slide, please. Mike? So, again, even though we are in an emergency, we do need to continue to provide essential services such as police and fire, utilities, public work services related to safety issues, senior nutrition services, emergency management. And we also need to support these essential functions through our strategic support departments like IT, HR, finance. So, due to the nature of this pandemic and the need for social distancing, as well as to comply with the county order, we have had to suspend several programs and cancel events. What this means is that there's classifications and positions that are not able to do their job, or they may have reduced hours, because we have gone to a different staffing model to ensure employee safety and continuity of operations. For example, if we had two or more people working in close quarters during normal operations, we now have either suspended their work, if non-essential, or have a different staffing model and schedule to allow social distancing for employee safety, and also to take preventive measures to limit putting an essential function at risk. So the proposed staffing plan before you, this is the framework that I just wanted to go over before we actually go into the details of the proposed plan. So our office worked really closely with all departments, and especially HR and finance on the proposed staffing plan that's before you today. And our primary drivers were the need for employee safety with social distancing and limiting field work to critical essential work, so many employees would be able to shelter in place. And as mentioned earlier, this approach is also very important to ensure continuity of essential operations, as we have gone to smaller crews and very minimal in-person interaction, limiting any potential exposure. We also recognize really early on the need for teleworking, and so our goal has been to maximize opportunities to enable this. The proposed plan before you today provides a combination of options to mitigate impact for employees who have no work or have reduced work hours. We understand this emergency impacts all of our employees. So some are working extraordinarily long hours. Others are not able to shelter in place and have to be out in the field for essential work. And yet, others are impacted because their regular work is no longer possible. Next slide, please. So these are the key elements of the proposed plan. We are asking council to approve temporary emergency pay through April 11th. We have also looked at different telework opportunities, use of existing leave benefits and possible expansion of some of them. We're also looking for approval to establish an 80-hour advanced COVID-19 specifically leave bank for those who may need it. There is also the Federal Act, which I'll talk about in a little bit of the presentation. So there's the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Only certain employees are eligible for this, but there are paid leave benefits that are part of this act. So that's part of the overall plan. And then, of course, insurance benefits. And we'll talk about our recommendations for that. Next slide, please. So temporary emergency pay. Now, at the start of the emergency, and then, so in two weeks, things were evolving really rapidly, including what was considered essential and non-essential functions. We were also working to enable remote working for employees, transitioning to different processes like the virtual public meetings, electronic approval of contracts, and all staff collaboration happening remotely. So during that time, to allow for some stability, we had brought forward a recommendation for temporary emergency pay, basically as a bridge solution for those that were not able to work. We recognize that this would seem unfair to many who were working long hours, but it was also unfair to not look out for those employees that suddenly found themselves with no work. Council approves the temporary emergency pay on, on March 17th, and that was to last through April 7th, which I mentioned again was when the earlier shelter-in-place order was supposed to end. Since that has now been extended, we've looked at different options. What we're asking council to do is approve the temporary emergency pay through April 11th. That aligns with the end of the pay period. It allows some of our part-time employees to get a few extra days to figure out their next steps. And it also allows staff to put in place certain administrative processes and systems. Next slide, please. So I touched upon this a little bit earlier, the telework opportunities. So we've been working across all departments, trying to enable teleworking for employees. We've, we've actually had a pretty proactive approach. We started even before the shelter-in-place went into effect, as we were anticipating what was coming down the pipeline. So we had started looking at what did we need to do in terms of technology support, develop guidelines and forms for teleworking. And also, we started to identify essential and non-essential functions that could be done remotely. And then to maximize the number of employees that can perform work remotely, department heads are continuing to evaluate special projects, training opportunities. We always have backlog in many areas, looking at updating SOPs, the standard operating procedures, as well as desktop manuals. So looking for opportunities for employees to do things that maybe we couldn't get to in the normal course of business, to do that remotely. And this effort will also provide an opportunity for some employees who can, cannot perform their regular duties remotely, but they may have skills to do something else. So again, we're trying to maximize that as well. Next slide, please. And so I talked about kind of one of the components of our proposed plan is looking at existing benefits and seeing how we could use those, as well as maybe have some expansion of those. So here's what we are recommending, that employees with no work or reduced hours use various leaves, as well as compensatory time off to supplement hours worked in the pay week. And this is for our full-time employees, as well as part-time, unbenefited and benefited. For the part-time, unbenefited employees, we are looking at them using their accrued leaves, and after that, transitioning to unemployment benefits. We will make sure we're providing resources and any assistance they need to help do that. We are also recommending temporarily allowing use of accrued sick leave for any hours. So looking at a more comprehensive way of using leave banks, not just limiting it to vacation or management leave or CTO. And then we are also asking for approval to continue paid insurance benefits for full-time and part-time benefited employees, even if they go below the 88 hours a month, which we, which normally they wouldn't be eligible for. But we understand the difficult time everyone's going through, and we want to make sure that we, we kind of reduce the stress on employees having to then find ways to continue their insurance. And then enhance unemployment benefits. So there's, at the federal level, they're also looking to enhance unemployment benefits. And we may also, given that we may have certain employees going on unemployment, we may require some additional funding from the city, but it's not clear at this point. So we're tracking at the federal level closely. Next slide, please. These are the proposed benefits. So this is new benefits that we're looking at, establishing an 80-hour advanced leave bank for benefited employees only. This is, they would use this only after they have depleted, exhausted their accrued paid leave, and that will be including the compensatory time off bank that they may have. And again, this is borrowed, so this is not an additional benefit. It will be offset against the future accruals of vacation leave hours, and will need to be paid back in case of separation from the city. And we are working closely with the city attorney's office on how this would be set up if council were to approve this today. Next slide, please. So now, this is the, the federal kind of leave benefits. So the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, this was signed on March 18th. It actually has two separate acts within it, which allow for emergency paid sick leave and then an expanded family and medical leave as well. It is subject to reduced pay formulas, pay caps, and tracking. So there's a lot of detail there, and our HR staff would work with employees on an individual basis to figure this out. The eligibility is really important. So employees for whom the city has no work are not eligible. This is only for employees where there is actually work, but because of certain reasons, and those are defined in the act, they, they are not able to work, and they would be eligible for this leave. And again, it's fairly complicated, so we would be working with individuals on this to see if they were eligible. Again, it's only for if they, if they, if there is work available. The act also allows for emergency responder employees to be exempted from the leave benefits, recognizing the nature of the work that they do. We are recommending that all designated emergency responders be deemed exempt because their services are critical in providing essential services and taking care of emergency needs. Exceptions would be considered, obviously, on a case, case-by-case basis. Next. And so in terms of next steps, if, we have been closely communicating with employees on this. We would continue to do that, depending on council action today. We have a plan to reach out to employees with the extension of the TEP, as well as the advanced leave bank, and have staff ready to assist them with that. We are also preparing to send out letters to all part-time and seasonal employees for whom the city does not have work with, including information about resources to access unemployment benefits. And again, this is pending council approval today of our plan. We will continue to evaluate city operations and, you know, look to maximize telework opportunities. And we are also starting to develop a ramp. And we are also starting to develop a ramp-up plan for resuming regular operations that would be in alignment with county order, but also looking at other public health and resource considerations. We're closely watching how other countries that have been a little ahead of us in this cycle are ramping up. We anticipate a phased-in approach. And so we're kind of working on different scenarios to see how that would roll out. And I think that that includes the presentation. Mike, I think that's the last slide. There's the recommendation. So we're asking for approval of the temporary emergency pay for all employees, full-time and part-time, through April 11. And then approving the recommended staffing plan from April 12 on and any related benefits. And this will go through the end of the shelter-in-place order or until the city ends its declared emergency and resumes regular operations. With that, available for questions.
Thank you so much, Ash Weenie, for your presentation and city staff was worked on the challenging times that we're certainly going through. Before I make any comments, I do want to go to our city clerk. I believe we have a public comment on this item.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor Tran. We do have one public comment, so I will read that to you. Hello, Mayor Tran and members of the city council. My name is Ryan Heron. I am the Labor Relations Representative for United Public Employees of California Local 792 and represent three bargaining groups within the city. The Milpitas Employees Association, the Milpitas Professional Technical Employees Association, and the Midmanagement Confidential Bargaining Unit. First, I would like to thank you for your ongoing efforts to stand by your employees in this time of crisis. The employees and these bargaining units are on the front lines of this battle against coronavirus and are putting their lives on the line in service to the citizens of the cities. We appreciate your ongoing efforts to stand by your employees in these trying times. Since the original shelter-in-place order, many of our members have continued to work either in person or from home. Those who are unable to work receive temporary emergency pay. We are deeply appreciative that employees have been able to receive TEP even if unable to work for the past several weeks. However, we are concerned that employees will be forced to take advanced leave and begin depleting their leave accrual banks. We believe the fairest thing to do in order to compensate those employees who were required to work during the shelter-in-place order since March 17 would be to credit them with an additional hour of leave for each hour they were required to work. This would result in all employees, whether they worked or not, receiving the same amount of TEP. If an employee worked 60 hours since March 17, they should be credited with 60 hours of additional leave in their accrual banks. Requiring employees to supplement pay payout of their leave accruals will cause great harm to our members very quickly. Many do not have enough hours on the books to cover the time that will be required. It could take some years to recover the advanced leave. We ask that the city do what is fair and what is right to stand by the employees, creating this separately bank to fairly compensate employees who had to work over the last several weeks. We also look forward to meeting and conferring with the city to work together on finding alternative work solutions that can allow our members to continue to provide essential services to the city moving forward. Thank you. That's the total of comments, just one that has been received for this item.
Thank you very much, Mary. I know you'll have a very busy evening with many public comments. And so we will, I'm sure, hear more as the night progresses. I want to thank you again for that first one, public comment. So I want to go back to Ash Weenie for her work on this. I know that this economic impact of the pandemic is unlike any we've felt in this century, it being so sudden and thorough throughout our society, where our economy essentially flipped the switch off. And we, as a country, closed a lot of business. I want to speak to the city employees who are tuning in, the department directors who will be relaying information to their personnel. I want to let folks here in Milpitas know that we are doing our best, our decision-making. And I know that I have faith in the council to make those decisions here and now. One thing in the presentation I noticed was the Families First Act. And I know here in Milpitas, we do put families first. And that includes our, our city organization. Our city is only as good as the personnel, the human capital. We can have all the positions in the city, but it's really the persons that bring their talent and skills to the organization. And that's what makes us who we are. This is an extension, and I think it's really fair to support it so that it does align with the pay period. I want to take a moment to speak about the 80 hours of leave that we could support and extend this evening. I don't see many other employers out there at all. Maybe, I'm not sure if I've seen it until tonight, that has extended that option. And again, that is an option. Employees can go ahead and bypass that and file for unemployment at their desire. Again, this is a challenging time and we are doing all we can. Emergency pay itself is something that I'm proud of, that we did. And we are analyzing it day by day, I'm certain, to ensure that we can provide the emergency pay for as long as we can, considering the fiscal impact and really the operations that we have here. It's hard to compensate a person when there's really no work. Some work, some positions aren't active as they may have been prior to the shelter-in-place. And so I want to recognize the United Public Employees Local 792. And Ryan, I know he submitted the comment and he requested for those hours that the employees worked. Tonight, I won't be supporting those 60 hours. I am thankful that those employees were able to work during this time. Many other organizations across our country didn't have that opportunity. And, and we will be proud of the action that we took. And I hope that tonight we can support the temporary emergency pay extension through the pay period. So I will go to the virtual raised hand. Next up, we have Vice Mayor Bob Nunez.
Thank you. So if Walter's still there, are you there, Walter, still? Well, maybe. Good. So I'm just looking. Okay. Number, I, I am in favor of, I'm going to sort of break it down. Number one, I think the extension into May done federally, it makes some sense and we should continue with the pay. And I, so my first part of my question is, have you been able to cost out the first recommendation, Walter, and if so, what does that cost to us?
So from a, so there's two ways for you to look at this. From a budgetary perspective, this adding TEP is just taking existing hours which were budgeted and reclassifying it. Instead of people working regular time and producing work and contributing, following their regular duties, now they're staying at home because there's no work for them. But if you're interested in how much TEP we have used and that people have coded to, we have the first pay period data, which was about an extrapolate of nine days of records. And we extrapolated out, it's about $300,000 for a pay period. And usually, what we pay in the pay period is about $1.4 million.
And is it most of these? Okay.
Yeah, just one, one caveat I want to add, if you don't mind. This was the first time we did this. We had people who were out sick, people who were, had to take care of their children, that they adjusted their life from working at the workplace to working at home. It took us a while to get people going with teleworking. So that's why the number, I think, is higher than usual.
Okay. And two more things. One is, some of these dollars, are we expected, expecting to get back from the federal government or not?
The only thing we've seen for now is what we could really reimburse for is work, overtime work, and for staff related to the crisis, to the pandemic. There, I've seen one federal grant, which can look at revenue, which we're losing, like in recreation, which we can't hold our classes. So, but that, the guidelines have not really come out yet. We don't know, and we don't understand yet what we can get reimbursed for.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And second, I, I think somebody needs to mute their mic because there's something going on in the background that I'm not quite sure what that is, but if they could, I'd appreciate that. Second, on number two, is when you call it a staffing plan, Ash Weenie, is that really just the benefits you're talking about? Or is there additional staff or the change in the staff? Or, or is there a definition to staffing plan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, Mike, if you could go to slide five. And so the Vice Mayor, this is, so part of it, a lot of it is the benefits. But I think also looking at the telework opportunities, making sure we can have as many people working.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So if you go back to that last slide, Mike. So in, in your, in your presentation, as we, you talked about talking to employees and employee groups. The public comment, is that a request that was made during one of those meetings? And I'm, I think I'm trying to ask, is this something that's covered under meet and confer? Or was it done during negotiations? I'm just trying to figure out how much I should say or not say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll, I'll get started and others may want to speak up, our HR director or the city attorney. So as we were working through this over the last week in terms of, because we were trying to also understand what the federal leaves was, there was a lot of confusion about who was eligible and whether that could be part of our plan or not. So as we were working through this, it was hard to provide definitive direction as to where we're going. It's, it's been quite a whirlwind. We did communicate, did let employees know and have been in constant communication with department heads on sort of what we are looking at, the possibility of stopping TEP. So the public comment is basically saying that people who worked did not get, you know, did not get TEP, and so they should get a credit. And that's, that's one perspective. We believe that, you know, if people were able to work, a lot of people have been working. And like I said, with the teleworking opportunities, we expect more people to be able to telework and not require to use their leaves. So this wasn't subject to meet and confer. We, we did not do that formally. We've been communicating as we've been kind of making progress on our plan. We've been keeping people in the loop. And we did share the plan yesterday as soon as we had it final with everyone.
So, so Chris or Liz, is it you're feeling that this doesn't fall under the collective bargaining or more under the meet and confer?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council Mayor. Actually, during an emergency, there's a government code section that exempts us from being able to immediately meet and confer. But as soon as we have a reasonable period of time after the emergency, we can touch base with the bargaining unit on all of these topics.
Okay. Okay. So, and have the cost of that request, have you had the chance to cost that out?
Yes, for TEP, we have costs based on what's been used and estimates going forward. We have not costed the specific request, which is crediting everybody who worked with an equal amount of TEP. We have not done that yet. We, we just found out about this.
So, Chris, do you have anything to add?
No, I think what you've heard from our HR director as well as our assistant city manager is accurate. You know, when, when you're in an emergency situation, changes have to be to staffing and plans and all of that. It's not mandated to have a meet and confer requirement upfront. Depending by that government code section is that we can do it, obviously, as soon as we can, within the limits that we're under in terms of the emergency situation.
Okay, so after hearing all that, I, I I, I can support both those recommendations with an understanding that we're under an obligation to meet and confer or to have collective bargaining on that one issue afterwards. I think that's something we should do. You know, I am really a very fiscal conservative person, but same time, being a member of, still a member of two unions, even in my retirement, and they're both government unions. I believe that we do things because we feel not only an obligation, but it's why we're in the public sector. But we hope that persons remember that when it comes time to decide now as to, as to pay and salary and things of that sort. And I hope that we do that when we come back and negotiate that TPE portion when it's brought back after the emergency is over, whenever we sit down at the table. Because I think it's important for those that actually had to stay here and do the work. So as long as we're going to do that afterwards, and there's a time for that, I can be supportive of one, the recommendations as they're being presented.
And just to clarify, Vice Mayor, the request that's coming to you is something that obviously came out of management's rollout essentially of the staff report that's before you tonight. Obviously, it's something you can consider and it's something that, you know, if, if, if we got council direction, we could look at. But, but we'll look at whether it's a mandatory meet and confer requirement.
So I didn't understand that, Chris. I thought you said that it was after, after the fact.
Well, changes that you or this, that the city would make in terms of the emergency situation, let's say there's reallocation of employees, there's a change in staffing. That's the kind of things that you would have to meet and confer about once you can in light of the emergency situation. Temporary emergency pay is something that the, that the council did authorize at your last meeting. Whether you wanted to authorize an additional extension of that would be something that you need more information about. But if that's something you wanted us to explore, we could look at that. But I'm, I, what I'm saying right now is I'm not convinced it's a mandatory meet and confer requirement, but it's something that I'm happy to look at and confirm for the council.
So do you think that changes what I just stated?
I don't. I think if you're applying to support staff's two recommendations, the additional request that's come to you through the additional request that's come to you through public comment is something that you could consider in the future.
And that's what I liked, since they just got it yesterday, I understood right now. Is that correct? Ash Weenie, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So I think that you need time to evaluate that. If you look at those persons that are not only in the public sector, but in the private sector, that are being able to continue to work, they put themselves at risk, depending on the kinds and types of jobs they have. But but because they're working, doesn't mean that we shouldn't at least consider if there's something else that we'd like to do. And and I'm not saying what we should do. I would just like to think that that's what we would be willing to consider, the request that's being made. So that's my, that's how I feel about what what's being recommended today.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Nunez. We'll go ahead and continue on here. Next up, we have Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for bringing forth these recommendations. And thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I definitely would echo some of your sentiments and questions. And for our staff, I know that it has been a very hard and challenging couple of weeks, and please know that we would not be able to do the work that we do in Milpitas without you. And as a public employee myself, I know it's been very, very challenging. And if it's one thing that I have learned is that regardless if you're in the public sector or in the private sector, it's in times of challenging times on how your employer reacts to their staff that really that really depicts the character of that organization that you work for. And that's what I want Milpitas to be remembered by. And so I do approve and I will be supporting both recommendations that are before us, as well as hoping to support a motion that gives directive to staff to come back with that more information on the public comment that was made in terms of the sixty hours and how we could really do a match for recruitment, if it's other, if it's even something that's comp time, or I'm not too sure, if something we could explore. I do believe that in times of challenges, our staff is in the front lines, and they've been working and they deserve to be compensated for that. And as a union member myself, I do believe that the city of Milpitas, we will rise above this virus. And so with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dominguez, and I request all members lower their virtual hand. I see a couple up. And we can have a great meeting here. I don't see any further virtual hands. I do want to welcome Councilmember Montana. I see you here. And we are strong and complete. I'll look for a motion to approve both recommendations.
So move second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Montana and a second by Councilmember Dominguez. All in favor of approving both recommendations. We'll go with the roll call. Councilmember Fan?
Hi.
Councilmember Montana?
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Nunez? We're, there you are. And I for myself, the motion is carried. And thank you again, Ash Weenie, and our great city staff. And we'll continue, if our folks out there tuning in, to provide updates. I know this is one of the most important things for our city employees, and we're gonna do everything we can. And I think the best thing we can do is to continue the communication between yourselves and your department director and the organization chain of command. And don't be afraid to send email out either to your elected officials as well, CC, why not? Let's keep the communication open, and that's going to get us through. Thank you very much. That's item number three.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So this meeting is adjourned. Let's go to closed session. And for folks out there in Milpitas and beyond watching, we'll be back approximately seven as scheduled. And so our your city council is going to close session. We'll be logging off and we'll be back as scheduled, seven PM. And depending on how long the closed session takes. Chris, was there anything you wanted before we adjourn here?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, Mayor, we do have to actually open up the regular meeting on the Zoom link that you guys all should have. From there, we'll open it up and we'll do the regular routine, which is roll during the closed session. And you'll want to log out of Zoom once you log in. I know it's going to be quick. And then call into the number that I provided to you. And if you need that, feel free to send me a text. I'm happy to facilitate that.
Could you describe that again, Chris, one more time?
What we're going to do is you're going to log out of this special meeting. You'll log into the regular meeting via Zoom. We're going to open up that meeting there, and then from there, we'll adjourn into closed session. And so once, once we adjourn into closed session, you'll want to log out of Zoom again and then call into the the phone number that I provided. But if you have any issue, send me a text or give me a call.
Yes, send me that number, Chris.
Yeah, so the Executive Secretary here at the city, she has sent you the communication for the, I guess, the web ID or the ID, is it called ID? Yeah. It's your email or maybe a text message from our Executive Secretary.
Okay, if you can send that to me now.
Yeah, she has check of text messages from the Executive Secretary. And the login ID and such should be on your text message possibly or email. And yeah, check your email right now. I think I see.
Okay.
And it's a six PM meeting. There's a separate one for seven.
Yes, yes, yes.